Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, December 6, 2022. All meetings are live streamed on the City channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President, Reverend Burgess, Pro Tem.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the pledges of allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands, one nation, under God, equal to all.
Amen. You may be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
No move.
Just a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Their next order of business is proclamation. We only have one to be presented, and that's the Councilwoman Smith, and that's Tartan Athletics. If those who are here from CMU, if you would come to me. And I'll read the proclamation. And of course, this is on behalf of President Teresa Kelsmith. Whereas the 2022-2023 fall athletic season marks the first time in Tartan history that Carnegie Mellon has had all six fall teams qualify for their respective National Collegiate Athletic Association championships. And whereas the Tartan football team clinched their second straight PAC championship and finished its season undefeated, making their 18-game winning streak the longest NCAA winning streak in the nation regardless of division. And whereas the Tartan men's soccer team made their first appearance in the NCAA Division III championships since 2018 and the 15th overall trip. The women's soccer team returned to the Sweet 16 this year, marking the third trip for the senior class and the sixth time in nine tournament appearances that the team finishes one of the top 16 teams. And whereas Tartan men's cross-country team raced in the NCAA Division III championships in its eighth straight appearance and placed 11th in the country, it was the fifth straight bid for the women's cross-country team to the NCAA Division III championship and the eighth in program history. And whereas the Tartan volleyball team made their second appearance in the NCAA Division III Women's Volleyball Championship and the eighth overall appearance in program history. The volleyball team advanced to the second round for the fourth time in program history since 2018. And whereas on the recreational side, the Tartans won the Fall Frenzy, an online bike race that put up, put us up against more than 100 other institutions academically last spring, 141 student athletes had 4.0 GPAs and 62% had 3.5 GPAs or higher. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend and congratulate the Carnegie Mellon University Tartan Athletic Department and athletes for a very successful fall season. And be it further resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 6, 2022 to be CMU Tartan Athletic Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Question or approve?
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. It's approved. Congratulations. Here, here's, I believe, all of them for you. Get to your other participants, and now for you to say, uh, say what.
So much. Well, thank you so much. We are, we're truly honored. Carnegie Mellon is, is obviously a vital part of the City of Pittsburgh, and our athletics program is, is proud to represent the university this way. It was a tremendous fall. Uh, we have the best student athletes in the country. They're achieving great things academically and athletically and, uh, within the city with what they do to give back, um, to children in the community and to make Pittsburgh a better place. So we're really proud to be here and thank you for the honor. Thanks, man.
I thought you would. It would be something to do.
Too much, too much going on.
That did one time.
Yeah. You want to open it up, and we'll go touch the camera. Okay. All right. Was it fun?
No.
No, when you went.
It was very.
Congratulations.
You got taken with the police, take those luchis.
You need to cut through here. You guys are skinny enough.
Okay, we continue with proclamations. We have two to be read and record.
Councilman Kraus presents, be it further resolved that the City of Pittsburgh declares November 29th, 2022 to be Captain Dino Abbott Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Council President Smith, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare December 8th, 2022 to be Amnesty International U.S. Local Group 39 Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Question or approve?
Need a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Um, it is approved. That takes us to the next order of business, which is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may before, be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. And so, um, our next, our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Swiss, Switzerland, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Vote by voter verification and uncensored freedom of speech and public comment are key to what I do. The former not present in Georgia at the moment, and the latter not in this room. American Physical Society, um, member, divisions of nuclear physics and quantum information. Concern of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, USA City Council is to offer us scientific information at a high level of intelligence. Um, this is anti-ignorance. I appreciate that. Um, imitating Mr. Biden's invitation to Nobel, not noble, physics winners of, for Quantum Entanglement to talk with him. Um, so why don't, um, Kelsmith, Ms. Kelsmith and Mr. Ganey invite a CMU or Pitt physicist here? The Tartans, that's fine. Uh, let's have some, some physics as well. Uh, I would do that. Can you imagine, uh, Mr. Biden or Mr. Ganey engaging a physicist, um, on Quantum Entanglement? Or the wave function? Or Bell's Inequality? Um, or the standard model for which Lee Song Dao and Yang Chen Ning won a physics Nobel Prize and condemned the exclusion of Woo Shan Xiong, a woman colleague who made the standard model, um, possible with their theory? I cannot imagine this. Um, I wish I could, but I can't. But Mr. Ganey and Mr. Biden, are they not sex-gender equity, anti-systemic sexism yesment? Um, they say so. Uh, Biden and Ganey appear to lack the scientific, in my opinion, the scientific information base and biochemical physics intelligence, uh, brain, uh, to do this. Mr. Bidenese, you know, is, there's this mush mouth, non-mathematical way that he, that he explains himself, and how y'all doing physicists in Pittsburgh, Ganeyese won't do. Um, global nation, global city information base, I have it. Biden and Ganey appear to not have it. Global national, global city intelligence, I have it. They appear not to have it. Now I'm going over to Starbucks, um, on Fourth Avenue, and you're invited to join me.
Thank you for the invitation. That brings us next to Devin McLean.
Uh, thank you. Good morning. Um, Devin McLean, longtime Pittsburgh resident, graduate of Pittsburgh Public Schools, Class 99, uh, I'm also a former Navy, I'm also a former Navy reservist. Um, it wasn't until I was after 21 that somebody told me that this was a racist city. They told me that, they told me that Pittsburgh was a southern city that floated north. Um, another wake-up call that I got around 22 was that, uh, one of my coworkers told me that me saying that I wanted to make a bunch of money as a waiter was a threat and that she could just lie to my boss and get me fired. But see, that wasn't the first time I heard that. See, a number of women in the black community have told me that they can put me in jail. All they got to do was lie. So being, being a black man, I'm wondering, um, where's the training that Pittsburgh police officers have in knowing that someone's a crack addict and knowing that they're lying? Because nobody should go to jail because someone's a crack addict and decides to lie to the police and because of prevailing attitudes, if you'd call it, I've got to sort that out in court later. And that's not fair. What's the difference between a black vet and a black, and a black felon applying for a job? Even, even a goofy job here in Market Square? Nothing? Because they're going to speak to you the same way. Um, being from, being from a broken home and, uh, single mother home, my mom being into drugs, uh, we as black men have been facing the consequences of, of, of decisions that we never had the wherewithal to, 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 to do. Like, okay, here's, here's a waddly hell misconception, guys. The military doesn't help anybody get a driver's license. Okay? So when you tell these black kids who's graduating high school, how are they going to make their life better? Telling them to join the military in order just to get a driver's license isn't true. The Pittsburgh Public Schools does not provide any sort of driver's license education, no kind of behind-the-wheel education. They took it out in 1976, man. I was too dumb to be born before then, I guess, you know? But you're not allowed to say it because the people in the, in the nonprofits get mad at you. I'll be back.
Our next speaker, registered speaker, is Aim Teresa Kompetura. Are you with us? Um, Teresa.
Yes, I am.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And may it please the council, I'm coming, comes in today. I want to bring, uh, two things up for consideration. Recently, our mayor asked what we can do to help us come together today as, as a community. I believe I have some suggestions that can help us. Today I present two to you. First, I applaud council in making your yellow pages. This is a place of respect, just like a judge's courtroom or the U.S. Senate floor, when people come here, they also afford you the same respect. If someone gets out of control, whether at the microphone or on the floor itself, you ought to be able to hold them in contempt of council. Just like good boundaries, you'll have to stand your ground because some adults sadly are still like children and will push your boundaries and test them. I have seen them do it at the podium. If they cannot give you respect in council chambers, how will they be able to respect you in the streets? By all means, our First Amendment rights are precious. Respect of this chamber and all its members, including the people that come forward, ought to be held accountable because even freedom of speech has its limitations. One cannot shed a fire when there is no fire that would cause chaos. One ought not be able to incite verbal violence at this podium or any other, for that would cause chaos. I have seen people do this. Council chambers are sacred. It's where people sometimes for the very first time meet their local legislative and executive branches. The second thing I'd like to bring up is I would like to ask for a public hearing on violence, guns, and shootings. I believe we need a public hearing on how to stop the violence in the city. People from all our communities can come forward at the same time on these suggestions and their viability, and then council and the mayor can come together to see what can be done. A public hearing on guns and shootings might be just what we need for people to come forward and for the appropriate decorum to be held throughout the same time, uh, because that did not happen over badly on, on the North Side's Plan for Peace event. Uh, I thank you for, for my time and hearing my considerations. Thank you.
That exhausts all of our registered speakers. So is there anyone here who wants to come before council? Please give your name and neighborhood, and you'll be given three minutes.
My name is Les Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. And, um, you can congratulate me on my approaching 90th birthday, December 30th. Um, I carry a slip of paper that I referred to earlier, at an earlier meeting regarding the fact that there's a need for a chief of police. We have the newspaper headline that says we're setting records in shootings nationally, that it should become a public health issue rather than just simply a police issue. And I came before you last meeting, recent meeting, and suggested that, um, Dan Quinn, a former police captain of the police force of our city, a man with 55 years of experience and I, working with him, making suggestions of putting a program together that would produce a potential 25% reduction. And he feels that that is worthy of attention. Much of the attention not being given to other people who have similar experience. We're paying them. We paid them until they retired, but we're not listening to anything that they think will work. I suggested that there was a fee structure and that that fee included payment of my earlier invoice that was requested by Chuck Dunham in the Contract Department of the Mayor. And that hopefully it will be positively worked upon, uh, this week now that the budgets are in. If you didn't want the program, you didn't want the million or more that has come in, then why did you vote for it? It's time to look again and say, new thinking is needed. The old ways and methods of solving the policing problems haven't been working. The numbers say it. We don't have to go ahead and be experts. All we have to do is look at the newspaper. I hope that this reminder will bring some positive result, but nobody has called. 412-758-1111. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Uh, my name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's the senior citizen home up at the top of Beffer. Um, I've been coming down here for over 20-something years, and I feel that I need to explain to you something. It's the reason why I do come. First, I want you to understand, my husband, Harold Brown, worked for the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh, first through URA, then Housing Authority of Pittsburgh. He had a stroke. Three men in that building, up on all-boned tires. One died, and within months, another had a stroke, and within months, another, my husband. My husband had a stroke, was sent to the hospital. We take him on Friday. When I go in, they're telling me, he said, the doctor said, I'll be in here a month. Okay. So he's there. That's Friday. Saturday, Monday, I leave, I come home. My husband is home. No medicine. I called to the hospital, I'm saying, you sent him home without medicine. No Coupa Tin. We didn't know what that was. So it happened five days later. I had left the house. I come back. When I come back, my door's open, and the neighbors are saying, your husband is at the hospital. He had another stroke. Now, when, um, a couple weeks ago, Burgess had the doctor, the good doctor, that good doctor you had, and I had been talking to him. I said, are you a minister? Because I said, you look so familiar. Then that's when the worker from the city, previous worker, said, this is Doctor so-and-so. But I did not get that together until I heard Limington and Lincoln. Well, he had been my husband's doctor. Okay, so it came to, I went to take him to an appointment. Nobody answered the door. We called, we couldn't get nobody. Now, I know he didn't get his medicine before, and he was running out. He may have another stroke. I didn't know what to do. But I remember Dr. Winters, the one that works with the homeless. I called Mercy Hospital, and I explained, my, the doctor has disappeared. He took over my doctor. You said this God-fearing man. Okay, he got to answer to God. Anytime he abandoned us, his, his, he abandoned my husband. He abandoned him. But you said God-fearing. Call him and ask him, do he remember that he did not take care of my husband? And how did I get to Dr. Winters? It had to be, I had to call him. I had to call him. You must understand, I come down here and fight you for not only my husband, when my hu, when my son was left on the floor in Wilkinsburg with five cops, and Mr. Burgess say that the garbage men in Wilkinsburg had done such a good job, we should hire the policeman. I said, you're going to hire them killers? You never questioned, never questioned them at all. I asked you to write a letter to the Justice Department. You told me to see Sean. You know what? I look at you, they say Reverend, I don't think you should be called Reverend, but they say you insist. You should be, I don't care if they call you Reverend Dog, you should be councilman first. Anytime you speak, it should be councilman, not Reverend, because you not do any reverence.
Right.
Yes. You know.
Right. I'm right.
Next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Do I have to push any buttons? Good morning. I'm Jacob Poole. I live in the Pittsburgh area, and I've been here for, well, considering Legner and those things for quite a long time since I was a minor child. I'm here to address the council again to remind that human trafficking and labor exploitation is real in the Pittsburgh area and the surrounding areas. You don't see it in the news, but this area is actually one of the top places for this, given all the international travel through and, um, transits. I myself was targeted when I was a little child, abducted and, uh, human trafficked here for exploitation because my German-Jewish family in Hungary and German parts of Europe, we had Nobel Prizes in science. And European police apprehended those persons, tried to when I was a little kid, but I was made by abductions and rape and manufacturing and eugenics. Because of buy order was placed from the Pittsburgh area. And I'm here, I exist alone. I don't know my name. I struggle to survive every, every single day in intense isolation. I go to public places, and I'm harassed on a daily basis. I have no family, no friends. I have a PhD from University of Pittsburgh, and I have inventions and things, but I have nowhere to go for Christmas, for Thanksgiving, for Hanukkah. And I don't know, how long can a person living in human traffic, exploit-to-exploited life, can survive alone? So, human trafficking is real, and I was made by abductions, rape, and eugenics for buy order. So it's very, very real in the Pittsburgh area. So I guess I'm going to exist here and to remind people that is a reality. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Are there any other speakers? Seeing no, thee no other speakers. We will move on, uh, to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we start off with, um, myself, Chair of Urban Recreation, Mr. Coghill, on my behalf.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1035. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with Key Service Corp. With regard to the 2022 AmeriCorps Summer Program, said agreement or agreements involves the matching of funds and show costs, the city not to exceed $12,000.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1036. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company, accepting a minimum annual electricity usage requirement in return for Duquesne Light Company to install a power line from the street to the Environmental Services Lot to supply power to the new EV charging infrastructure to charge electric refuse trucks.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you much.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill 1037. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Environmental Charter School Project, which will involve the development of an environmental charter school with associated amenities. This site addresses 6545 Hamilton Avenue in 8th Ward. Bill Number 1038. Resolution amending Resolution 219 of 2013, adopting an official sewer, official plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Lower Hill Redevelopment Project in the 3rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Lower Hill Redevelopment.
Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, no new papers. I apologize.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Human Resources. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers.
Uh, Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Kelsmith has three things. First, uh-
and Budget to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company, accepting a minimum annual electricity usage requirement in return for Duquesne Light Company to install a power line from the street to the Environmental Services Lot to supply power to the new EV charging infrastructure to charge electric refuse trucks.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you much.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill 1037. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the environmental charter school project, which will involve the development of an environmental charter school with associated amenities. This site addresses 6545 Hamilton Avenue in Eighth Ward. Bill Number 1038. Resolution amending Resolution 219 of 2013, adopting an official sewage, official plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the Lower Hill redevelopment project in the Third Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Lower Hill redevelopment.
Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, no new papers. I apologize.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Human Resources. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Kell Smith has three things. First, a resolution.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill 1039. Resolution authorizing the Office of the City Clerk to donate $45,000 to the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank.
I need a motion to waive Roe eight.
So moved. Brief discussion, Mr. Chair.
Need a second.
Second.
Mr. Kraus.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I believe this is cosponsored by myself. Yes. If I may add, myself is a cosponsor of this bill. Please, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
All right, so the motion is to waive Roe eight, so it appears on tomorrow's standing committee's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, we have a second appointment to be read.
Bill 1040. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Kyle Chintala Pili to serve as a member of the Urban Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire December 2nd, 2027.
I need a motion to read, receive, and file.
Moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We have one communication.
Bill 1041. Communication from Arletta Scott Williams, Executive Director of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, submitting a position and salary report as of June 30 of 2022.
Need a motion to receive, to read, receive, and file.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We move now to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before us? Seeing none, the next order of business is Report of Committee for Final Action, started by Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Safety.
Ah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill 1029. Reported a Committee on Public Safety Services for November 30 of 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 995. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with United States Department of Justice for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in an amount not to exceed $79,327 for funding technology projects. And Bill Number 996. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with St. Moore's Security Services, Inc., for security guard services. Compensation under the agreement shall be in an amount not to exceed $6,990,61, with annual not-to-exceed amounts as set forth below for each respective budget year, subject to the availability of funds and annual council appropriations at rates in compliance with and subject to any applicable requirements, including but not limited to collective bargaining commitments in the City of Pittsburgh's service worker prevailing wage ordinance.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
The bill.
Actually, I'm online, too.
Ah. Our president is online.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
I'm registered.
All right. The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Chair.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1030. Reported a Committee on Public Works for November 30 of 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 985. Resolution amending Resolution 250 of 2021, which authorized the mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Quetica for professional services relating to fleet telematics and snow route optimization by expanding the scope to include GPS AVL installation and maintenance for environmental service and by increasing the term and authorized not-to-exceed amount by $492,660, for total cost not to exceed $2,626,208. Bill 986. Resolution further amending Resolution 840 of 2019, effective December 23, 2019, as amended entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Liberty Avenue by $275,000." Bill 987. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021-2026 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Liberty Avenue by $92,993.21." Bill 988. Resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the City of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes certain property in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh owned by Brian and Donna Albert located along Andover Terrace, and authorizing the payment of just compensation in necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto, and further authorizing, in lieu of imminent demand, the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary and permanent easements on this property and other certain separate properties necessary for completion of temporary support work for land stabilization around Andover Terrace. Bill 990. Resolution providing for an agreement with CSXT for engineering work on the Charles Anderson Bridge replacement project and providing for the payment of the cost not to exceed Bill 991. Resolution providing for reimbursement in maintenance agreement or agreements with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for local costs to upgrade pedestrian facilities at SR 19A84 as part of a larger project undertaken by PennDOT to improve SR 19A84 by roadway altercation or resurfacing at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh municipality not to exceed $27,600. Bill 992. Resolution amending Resolution 924 of 2021 entitled, "Resolution Providing for reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the Pittsburgh pedestrian wayfinding project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,400,000." This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of zero dollars. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements to increase the not-to-exceed amount to $1,500,000, an increase of $100,000, and authorize entering into a reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Bill 993. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with multiple phases of the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $7,405,556, an increase of $800,000 for the final design phase from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh of $4,500, an increase of $2,500 from the previously executed agreement. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1015. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to commit future-year capital funding for an award or awards to Masar Corporation, East West Manufacturing and Supply Company, Inc., Westmoreland Electric Services, LLC, and Will's Mechanical Contracting and Supplier, Inc., for the build-out and construction at 412 Boulevard of the Allies. The additional funding needed beyond what has already been allocated is not to exceed
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross.
May I ask the clerks a question? So, we're looking at last week's standing committee, and I voted no on Bill 2022, 1025. Oh, no, 1015. I'm kind of like double and triple checking my notes, and it's, there are a lot of bills in the committee, so I've lost track of my numbers. Thank you. Okay, so I would like to register, I will be, when we get to me, I will be voting no again on Bill 1015, and I'm standing on Bill 985, but I was confused by the numbers. So now that I'm not confused, I'm fine. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm always slightly confused, so I understand. The bill, is there any more discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Thank you. I'd like to abstain on Bill 985, and then vote no on Bill 1015, and I'll be voting aye on all other bills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Clerk, you continue.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye on all bills.
Mr. Lavelle.
Abstain on Bill 988.
Aye on all other bills.
Mrs. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
No on Bill 985 and 1015. Aye on all other bills.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem. So, aye on Bills 986, not, or, I'm sorry. Eight ayes on Bills 986, 987, 990, 991, 992, and 993, and zero noes. Seven, or, six ayes, two noes on Bills, on Bill 1015, and one. Seven ayes, one abstention on Bill 988, and five, yes, yeah, five ayes, one no, and one abstention on 195, on Bill 985.
Okay. Thank you very much. The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us now to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill 1031. Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 30 of 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 819. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article IV, Planning Districts, Chapter 9, 10, Downtown Districts to Update Review and Approval Processes. Bill 999. Resolution further amending Resolution 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific public service grant projects in City Council District 1 and District 7, and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1001. Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the implementation administration of the housing counseling program and related cost amount not to exceed $100,000. Bill 1001. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with WSP USA, Inc., for services related to an update to the Manchester National Register District that will add additional historic contacts, including civil rights history, to buildings within the district at a cost not to exceed $35,000.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That brings us to our committee, which is the Committee on Urban Recreation. Mr. Coghill, on my behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill 1032. Reported a Committee on Urban Recreation for November 30 of 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 984. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the DHS OEQ Service Corp. in an amount not to exceed $12,000 for the payment of the 2021 AmeriCorps Key Summer Program, which provides funding for hosting nine youth to participate in a Department of Parks and Recreation educational programming jobs training for the summer. The AmeriCorps member who participated in this program worked alongside city park staff to support the multi-site summer camps and providing for the payment thereof.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro tem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill 1033. Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for November 30 of 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 997. Resolution amending Resolution 644 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Karasov Technology Corp. to provide Google Cloud subscription services and add Google Assured workload to provide secure storage for sensitive data on the city's cloud platform in an amount not to exceed $4,282,824.38. Bill 998. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Yvonty to provide Sharewell ITSM Information Technology Service Management Systems to license, implement, manage, operate, and deliver IT services to meet the needs of the City of Pittsburgh at a sum not to exceed $709,177.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Ms. Erica Strasburger, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion to recommit Bill 997 at the request of the department for a substantive change that needs to be made.
You're second.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. Is there any other further discussion on the bill? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye. Aye.
Reverend Burgess pro tem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill 1034. Reported a committee on intergovernmental affairs for November 30th, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 994. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the Fab 19 East General Robinson.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess pro tem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is now finally passed. Before turning it over to members, I do have a number of meeting announcements. Council budget hearings continue this afternoon at 1:30 with the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure chaired by Councilman Coghill. The Office of Municipal Investigations chaired by Councilperson Strasburger and the Citizen Police Review Board chaired by Councilman Kraus. Council's standing committees meeting will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, December 7th at 10:00 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. To register to speak at this council meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council's meeting webpage. You may also call the Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, Wednesday afternoon at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings with the Commission on Human Relations chaired by Councilperson Strasburger, the Carnegie Library chaired by Councilwoman Smith and the Oakland Business Improvement District and Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership chaired by Councilman Lavelle. On Thursday, December 8th, council's 10:00 a.m. budget hearing is with the Department of Public Works, including the Administration, Environmental Services, Facility Operations and Capital Projects chaired by Councilman Coghill. At 1:30, council will hold budget hearings with the Park Tax Trust Fund chaired by Councilman Coghill and the Department of Park and Recreation chaired by myself, Councilman Burgess. On Monday, December 12th at 10:00 a.m., we will hold the swearing-in ceremonies for Councilwoman-elect Barbara Warwick here in council chambers. Is there anything else from members? Mr. Kraus.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So in light of our soon-to-be-receiving a new member here on the body, Councilwoman Gross shared with me this morning that today is her ninth anniversary of exactly this day that she was sworn in, nine years ago today. I just thought it might be nice to kind of recognize that. Thanks.
Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you very much for that moment. Anyone else? Seeing no other conversation, we hope our president, Teresa Kell Smith, we know you're sheer law under weather, please get well and come back to us quickly, Madam President. I need a motion to do three, well, we have no one to excuse, but I do need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. We are adjourned.